All right, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:06 PM. Roll call please Ms. Bell.
Good evening everyone. Ms. Obadoza, Ms. Lahano, Ms. Benitez, Ms. Domasio, Ms. Cardoza, Ms. Tahada, Mr. Ochoapinti, Salahoudin, and Mr. Lee.
Here. Ms. Obadoza, please lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda, Dr. Gloria?
There are no changes, but I just want to advise the board and our public who's here tonight, it's exam week, so our student trustees are off studying for finals.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Item five, we will do the installation of elected board trustees. We'll begin with Ms. Garrett. Who is administering the oath for you?
We're all ready.
Go right ahead.
I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
I, Carla Garrett, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of, and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constate, and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemy foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And allegiance to the State of, to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of California.
And the Constitution of California.
That I have taken this obligation freely.
That I have taken this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations or purpose.
Without any mental reservation or purpose.
Or evasion.
Or evasion.
And that I will willingly and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Yep, that's it. You can take your seat.
Come on up, Carla.
Yeah.
We will now take oath of office for Ms. Ochoapinti. Is there anybody doing it for you, or do you want?
Ready? I, (inaudible).
I, (inaudible).
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of California.
And the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well, and that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And who's Tahada?
Come as you are.
Exactly.
I, Rosie Tahada. I'm Rosie Tahada. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies foreign and domestic. Against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear truth, truth faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. That I will bear truth faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of California. And the Constitution of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. The duties upon which I am about to enter. The duties upon which I am about to enter.
At this, at this time, while we're still on, on the oath of office before we recess to the installation receptions, are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the oath of office and our, and those who have been newly sworn in? All right, no takers. We will recess now. (inaudible).
Yeah, well, just to like to say, first of all, excuse my voice, I'm sorry I wasn't, but I just want to say welcome to our board. It has been lovely getting to know you and why you've been coming to meetings ever since the election and spending time with you at CSBA. I'm really excited about working with you in the future, so welcome to our board.
Thanks, Colleen. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course, it's my pleasure, and of course, as we get, it's nice to keep the team together. We're glad to welcome you back to the team as well.
Would you like to say anything, Carla?
Actually, I, well, I just wanted to thank all my, my husband, my family, my friends, you know, being here today and supporting my decision to be here and become the part of the board member, and I really am grateful to be given the opportunity to be able to come and serve the community and serve the students and the families of our district. And I'm really looking forward to being a steward of our district's vision and, and the resources that we're about to, you know, you know, to, for the students, so. That's it, thank you.
You're the happiest.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're on board with us.
When I met you for the first time at back-to-school night at Thornton a year ago.
Yes.
We became fast friends.
We did.
So, as you always say, I got you.
Yeah. I appreciate it, Rosie.
Did you just state your name?
Will Kason. And Carla, we just wanted to let you know as a family how thankful and proud we are of you for this passion that you have to make a difference in the world and also make a difference in this local school district. I believe that the board is in a better place now that you've done great things, but with the work and the heart that you're going to bring to it, Carla, you're going to be able to take things to an entire new level. We thank you for your commitment to excellence. We thank you for your heart of gratitude and service to others, and we're just so thankful and blessed that you have taken on this obligation, and I believe it's a place of servanthood. And I believe that you're going to be able to do some things that's going to be twin setting, that as the nation looks for answers, the answer's going to be within this room, you're going to be the person that's going to spearhead that. So take on this ownership with a heart of gratitude, with a heart of passion, and I'll just be you.
Thanks, Will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody could top that, so. (inaudible) would you like to say anything?
No.
Are you good?
(inaudible).
All right. Fantastic. All right, then we will adjourn to this, to reception at 6:15, and we'll return to regular session at 6:45.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, we will reconvene to regular session at 6:49 PM. Roll call please Ms. Bell.
Good evening everyone. Ms. Oviedoza, Ms. Lahano, Ms. Benitez, Ms. Delmasio, Ms. Cardoza, Ms. Tahada, Mr. Ochaventi, Ms. In Garrett, Ms. Salahedid, and Mr. Lee.
Here. Do we have any blue cards for public comment on closed session items, Ms. Bell? Okay. Item 10, approval of minutes, meeting minutes for October 22nd, 2018.
May I have your approval minutes?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Item 11A, 2018 Daily City Citizen of the Year, Rowena Maafua. Not here? Not here yet?
Okay.
Okay. She's on her way. We'll come back to it as soon as she appears. So we'll go on to item 11B, 2018 Daily City Youth of the Year, Vicente Roberts. Come on up.
Yeah, if you'd like to.
So I will read the bio that's presented, read the bio into the record this evening. Vicente is an extremely well-rounded young man. He is unique amongst his peers in that he possesses academic curiosity and athletic potential, as well as a number of less obvious qualities that cannot be indicated by grades or athletic prowess. Born at Stanford on February 5th, 2001, Vicente grew up in Daly City. He attended Susan B. Anthony through the fifth grade and then attended Thomas R. Policy Middle School. He attributes his academic success to the foundation he received at those schools, naming his kindergarten teacher Ms. Putrus in particular. Although Vicente states that "sloth" is his deadly sin, though I can relate, he claims he overcomes this with natural ability. His teachers and current principal have a different opinion. Vicente is the culmination of natural promise and applied energy. It is his work ethic fostered by his father that has brought him this far. At the time of this writing, Vicente's GPA is 4.173. He is always amongst his teachers' favorites in terms of academic promise and student behavior. He does not shy away from a challenge. During his junior year, Vicente challenged himself to two AP classes as well as physics. He is taking three AP courses this year. After demonstrating his prowess on the JV basketball team, Vicente was selected to play varsity basketball. He will be returning to compete again this season. Vicente has earned his black belt in martial arts. Not only that, he has developed as a musician, displaying skills on piano, guitar, and percussion. In everything he does, there is a clear intent to balance mind and body. Vicente's mother passed away when he was in the fifth grade. At the time, he maintained a colorful attitude exterior, but on the inside, he felt cold. He credits the staff at Jefferson High School, their friendliness and coherent attitude with bringing out the young man we see today. This is what leads me to his less tangible qualities. One should have the skills I mentioned above and yet lack the fundamental qualities of conscience or ethics. Vicente is in full possession of what we call character. He looks out for the underdog. His character does not allow him to take part in those teenage activities that lead to disparagement of others. He does not tolerate bullying. Vicente is, and always will be, a leader.
I would like to say thank yous to the board. I don't really know what to say. I didn't know I was supposed to speak, but I'd like to thank the board, my family. I thanked a lot of people during the other ceremony, but I would also like to give a special thanks to Principal Schuess. We have something for him.
Come on up, Mark.
I would like to present this to you. Thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Biggest card.
Can you just stand?
You might want to turn towards the cameras over there, too.
Where's the teacher? I'm not teaching names. I'm not. I get all teary.
Yeah, come on up and look.
Let's get Dad. Dad, want to need a picture too?
Oh yeah. And Vicente, this is for you.
I'll take a picture.
We're getting lost for words.
Is that?
Oh, yeah.
All right, everyone look at here. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Raise a big, fine young hand there.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah.
Remembering the three ladies sitting on the corner.
Yeah. Maybe you can't see.
Quickly, too, Vicente.
My excuse my voice. I just want to say that sometimes we get pushback for athletics because people say we need to focus on academics. But I really feel like athletics helps us become more well-rounded, and so I just want to thank you for showing that we have student athletes with the emphasis on student force. So thank you for everything that you're doing to help reinforce everything that we're doing.
And I will go back to item 11A, 2018 Daily City Citizen of the Year, Rowena Maafua. So come on up. So I'll just say real quick, as you come up, the Board of Trustees would like to recognize Jefferson High School alum, Jefferson High School Health aide, Chairman and Founder of Pacific Islanders Together, Founder of Christmas in the Park, and Community Leader and Activist, Rowena Maafua, for being honored by the Mayor and City Councilors of Daly City as the 2018 Daily City Citizen of the Year. Rowena, thank you for all you do for our JHSD students and families and the community. Your hard work and dedication does not go unnoticed. Congratulations to you on receiving this awesome honor.
Thank you.
You want to say anything?
Thank you for them.
We got family here?
Oh, my goodness.
Mama, family.
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
There we go. Nice smile. One, two, three.
Can I just grab it for the microphone? Thank you so much to our board members. But first and foremost, I give all the honor and glory to God. Without Him, nothing would be possible. This is such an honor. This recognition is not only for all the services that I provide, but also I want to accept this on behalf of Jefferson High School. We've got great leadership, the admin team, Mr. Bashir's, great leader, as well as the students, the teachers and staff at Jefferson High School. This is for them. Because if it wasn't for them, we could not do our outreach within the community. And I cannot do what I do without this man behind here. Mr. Bashir's, oh my gosh, hi, Ms. M. I didn't even recognize you. Sorry, Ms. M. She's amazing, you know? She's amazing. She's right across from me, and I was sharing with her. But I won't take too much of my time, you know, because I can talk, you know? But I just want to say to all of our beautiful board members, our superintendent, and this one that's typing, and all of you, and everyone here, my husband, that's always here. I had to actually, I was at another event, I had to grab him to bring him with me. If it wasn't for this one to call me, because he's my support system, encourages me and always there in whatever I do, he's always there with me and my family. So again, on behalf of my family, my Jefferson community, high school community, I just want to say, this one is for them. Thank you so much.
Anything you want to add?
Well, I grew up with Reyna's younger siblings, you know? So when I did, I had heard about her, but I had no idea that they were related until she told me her last name had been Pochi. So we're all family. We're all family. The world is small. And the Jefferson community's heart is big. We prove that. And I love you.
I love you too.
I love working with you. We've been working together lately, and it's just been wonderful.
Thank you so much for all you do.
No, 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 I mean. No, so I just wanted to say to you that you do a plethora of things. Every time I turn around, they're like, there's an event. That Reyna's hosting, and I'm like, how could you be hosting another event? They just had an event. But I want to especially acknowledge you, the work that you do for the Pacific Islander community. Because representation matters, and reflecting our culture matters. And it helps your connectedness to your school if you know that they respect your culture. So everything that you do in their school, that makes it a home for people, regardless of where they come from, lets you know that it's part of our mission to show that we're open and inclusive. And we couldn't do that at Jefferson without the work that you do. So I just want you to know that even though I can't make it at times because I work in Alabama, you know, and it's get back and forth, that I'm always with you in spirit, encouraging you on in everything we do. So thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much for everything you've done for us. All right, item 12A, Board Report, we'll start at the other end of the table, Ms. Delmasio.
We're doing finals right now. We have our first meeting today, and then we continue for the next two days. So having the infrastructure problem, that's pretty much it.
So it seems like it's been, I have a daughter at Jefferson, so I feel like it's been just a Jefferson week. I did attend the parent ed night at Jeff on student wellness. And what I loved was that it was so well-attended by so many parents from all over the district. And I had, I mean, the questions the parents had afterwards was really meaningful, and that other parents were offering some of their feedback, that was really good, too. So even though it was at Jefferson, it was, there were people from all over, and I really loved that. I also went to the winter concert of It's a Wonderful Life. And our own student trustee, Erica Cardoza, was a main actor in it. She played an angel. And the amount of line she had, I was amazed. And that, you know, Ms. Owens had written it. It was, it was so creative. And, but then she said that she workshopped it with her students, and they made it more updated. And it was, the music was great, the acting was great. And what I really love is, when you're watching it, it reminds you of when I went to Jeff. Because when you're watching it, everyone's so invested in the, everyone in the audience just participates. And then also, we're doing the gift wrapping at Ceremony Center. And I, with the help of Justin Lee, I got, and a lot of the teachers in the PTSA and the ASB, and all the sports boosters, Reyna especially, you know, just getting all the students and teachers and PTSA members involved to help raise money for Daily City Police Athletic League, Jeff Sports, and PTSA. It's a real partnership. So do you need gift wrapping? You can come there, or you can go to the Westmore table as well, because we have representation there as well. So happy holidays, everyone.
Good chance to see the winter concert. Some of the excellent work, of course, trustee Erica Cardoza, her guitar solos, that was good. Closed it out strong. A lot of performances on stage, and a lot of the people that I think contribute to it. It does show a lot of the originality, and I think the engagement of the students. So that was, you know, this is one example. Yeah, I did stop at the mall, El Camino and Westmore. So seeing students from all over, see students from all over, I think, is a huge asset. And I'm glad that we're engaging in the community, especially with ceremony, since a lot of resources come through ceremony, that there's a way for that to mall, for the way for the mall and for, I think, the business community to give back in a way to give that presence on that stage to our community. So very excited for the end of 2018, and honored to be back on board, of course. And yeah, good luck on finals for all the students. I know it's a school night, so.
Okay, so I had the pleasure of being recruited by Rosie over here, and being able to spend a few hours each day on the weekend and help wrap presents at the Jeff table. It was actually really fun, and I met Kelly here, actually, and some of the ASB students at Jeff, and it was, they were fantastic and did a great job wrapping gifts. So you guys keep up the good work, and happy fundraising, hope you guys make lots over there. If I have some more time, I'll definitely come out and support you guys and help more, help more with the gift wrapping, too, and words of encouragement and supervision. And yes, good luck with finals and happy holidays to all of you guys. Keep up the good work.
So I went to a couple installations. Mr. Tahada and I went to the Daily City Council installation reorganization. And Mr. Tahada and I also went to the Jefferson Elementary School District installation reorganization. We had our Student Advisory Committee meeting on the 12th, and the students have been working on a survey. And so far, your responses are, how many responses have you? Yeah, it's incredible. Like, that's the highest amount of responses we've had in, I think, any survey we've ever done. And Jefferson actually has the most responses, I think. Yeah, like six or seven hundreds, hundreds, so great job, guys. So I'm really looking forward to the results of that survey. And then you guys being able to use it for LCAP, because show me a school that has that student voices involved in their LCAP. We also, Mr. Tahada and I did breakfast at Jefferson on Monday for the teacher. I had half an hour's sleep, and she had no sleep. She'd eaten there. But we cooked a lot of food. Yeah. And I also want to give a shout out, when we talk about like PTA, and a lot of PTAs, they say there's a lack of the T and teachers involvement. But at Jeff, Mrs. Amos, Robin and Joel, Mr. Bruxford, unbelievable what they do. And Robin was up at six in the morning with me at the school, helping me get stuff ready. And I was telling her, this is a teacher breakfast, so you're not supposed to be helping me with this. But she was right there helping out. So big shout out to Mr. Bruxford and Mrs. Amos. I mean, they're a huge help to the community. And then this morning, I met with Glenn, who's on the City Council of Brisbane, to talk about the new development that they're having, that was just approved in their city.
Thank you. So it was fun for me to be able to attend the Measure Y party on Friday. And again, thank you so much to the work. The holiday party. It was wonderful to be there, to be able to socialize with staff. Very happy folks. It was wonderful to see. And also, I was able to attend the Pacifica Council installation last night. Nice to see two of our employees actually be installed as City Council members in Pacifica, so that was really wonderful to be able to witness. And considering that some good friends of mine are on that council as well, so it's certainly, it was certainly an honor for me and Paige to be there for our friends. That's all I've got for this evening. Dr. Gloria?
I have a couple of things. Yes, I agree. Thank you to Candace and Monica for planning that very lovely party last Friday. I think it was great to everybody come together like that, whether it was for the holidays or it was for Measure Y, I don't know, but it was a good party. Also want to give a shout out to Ms. Presta. You know that as long as I've been here, probably before I got here, we've had a trouble, we've had problems getting subs for our teachers. We have teachers who don't even want to call in sick because it puts such pressure on their colleagues to fill classes. Ms. Presta's really been working on, first of all, reaching out to former substitutes who used to work for us, retirees, letting them know how we negotiated some better and less, better rates and less complicated procedures. But also, she contracted with a nonprofit company, Swing, and their whole purpose is to provide public education with subs. And what I'm hearing from, you know, especially from Terranova, I happen to be there every day, is the assistant is not spending every hour of the day badgering staff to fill classes. So just hats off to Ms. Presta for that. It is exam week, so that's why we have some empty seats here. I, too, attended a winter concert. I went to Terranova's winter concert last week, and it's, you're right. It's like you go right back to when you were in high school, like, oh, I remember when I used to play the saxophone. But it was, it was awesome. And the students get to know you, and the staff love that you come, and then parents, so it's just really great to get out there. And we do have one more special party tomorrow, the District Office Extravaganza. So if you have a chance, stop by from 12 to 1:30. Expensive, must-have prizes. Donate it personally. Okay, thank you.
Item 12C, Student Activities Presentation. I believe Jefferson High School's in the house. Come on up.
All right. I would like to start off by saying good evening, board members. You know, I see a lot of familiar faces. Good to see you. And I just want to say thank you for inviting us to present, you know? I feel like it's very important that our voice is being heard, and I just want to say thank you for hearing our voices. I'm Justin Lee. I am your ASB President of Jefferson High School.
I'm Edgar Gonzaga. I'm your ASB Treasurer of Jefferson High School.
I'm Chris Vicencio. I'm your VP of Spirit.
I'm Kelly Manjore, School Secretary.
All right, so we're going to start off with Club Rush. As you can see, we have over 25 clubs at Jeff. As you can see, there's Poly Club, Future Business Leaders of America, Key Club, Gay Shaved Alliance Club, Gardening Club. It's very important that we have these clubs for students because we want them to be able to have options to like fit their interests, right? And actually, this year, we have a lot of new revived clubs. Includes Strength Club, Makers Club, Gardening Club, Latin X Heritage Club, Poetry and Writing Club, and Medicine Club. So next here is Rally. Our Homecoming Rally was in October. As you can see, we have our big amazing posters we have up there. So if you can see the bottom left picture, we actually welcomed our new staff with a musical chairs game. And our winner was Ms. Holloman. Ms. Holloman, she actually received some Jeff swag. Yeah, we gave them, we gave her a high five, too, at bragging rights. It was amazing. Next up, we have our Spirit Week, our Dress Up Days to follow up for the Homecoming Rally. So there's Pink on Wednesdays, Bring Yourself to Animal Day, White Out Day, and Cozy Day. It was really surprising to us that a lot of the freshmen participated a lot. These are just a few pictures, but there's a lot. The bag chops fit the theme there. It was amazing, though. Everyone participated, it was great. Yeah.
So during our Spirit Weeks, we also have lunchtime activities led by very, very on student leaders. It was a lot of fun, and we were able to promote inclusivity, positive spirit, and teamwork. So our very first Food Day was in October, and it was a huge success. Clubs provided yummy foods for the student, and everyone made a lot of profit.
I wanted to add on something. So we started doing digital flyers for our Spanish speakers, our Filipino speakers, what else, our Chinese.
Chinese Americans.
Yeah, we started making posters for them, since some of them, it's really hard for them to, you know, read English sometimes, so we wanted to make it more inviting to them. So we started doing that this year. Yeah.
So a new requirement of ASB is that the classes should all host one campus cleanup. So this semester, the seniors and juniors have taken turns hosting. Hopefully, we have been good role models and emphasizing the importance of making sure our campus is a beautiful environment for everyone.
So our clubs this year have been very, very busy. They've been working really hard to create new events and attend these regional conferences. You could see like Key Club at their regional conference and JSA at their regional conference, too. And of course, we have our GGG team, who's always at hosting the beach cleanup. And we have our new Gardening Club, who's actually getting started. And we have a new club who got started by Garmani. It's the Health and Medical Club. And that's actually a photo of them interviewing with the actual doctor in the background.
Surgeon.
A surgeon, yeah. So on top of that, we also have the new clubs, like we were talking about, like Makers Club. It's been like a way for people to get a more in-depth way of experience, the engineering field, the creative side of things. And we have GGG at the bottom, in the middle, redoing the new posters for the tri bins. And the bottom right, that's Latino, Latino X Heritage, which are making sugar skulls for a Day of the Dead, and BSU selling snacks after school for fundraising. And we have our second annual plastic water bottle drive. This is a students versus staff competition. And last year, the students won, but teachers came back with a vengeance this year, and they won. They won by a margin of two pounds. And collectively, we have diverted, Jefferson High School has diverted 174.4 pounds of plastic bottles from ending up in the landfill. So this is just another way of Jefferson High School doing their part about making the community a more sustainable and better place. And over there at the bottom right, you can see Mr. Bashir is plying me in the face.
I'd be happy to share with you the photo of what happened to me and my beard last year.
I don't know what he's talking about. I don't know what he's talking about. Payback, Justin. But at the top left, you can actually see how many, uh, water bottles we have. That's a, that's a meter stick for comparison and you could see just how much plastic that is.
And that's just students.
Yep. And here we have our band. So last week we just had our, uh, band winter concerts slash play. And in the second photo, this is, um, our participation at Fog Fest, where, um, we also had Color Guard, uh, coming back and resurgence and being part of the band as a new NND. And, uh, band has also been able to get first place in competition in marching band at Delmar High School in San Jose. And, um, we, uh, we would just like to say that we're so lucky, thanks to LCAP, uh, that ASB has been able to attend amazing conferences such as CADA every year, which is a great place for us to learn about, uh, how to run student government, plan events, promote spirit and inclusivity, and how to fundraise. Uh, all of our clubs and classes have been really stepping up on their fundraising, uh, this year and help fund their events and clubs that are so prominent in Jefferson High School. And we have so many new staff this year, uh, that they have been a great addition with their spirit. And we hope to have a great, uh, last semester of our senior year and more to come. Thank you.
Comments, questions, it's on my show.
Are you like the signs in different languages? I think that's something that we could implement at Terranova too. And your focus on inclusivity is really inspiring.
That's my daughter with the yellow hat. She loves being part of ASB despite it being at seven in the morning. This morning she would not get up and I, I tried to get her out of bed and she, uh, that's when she told me there was no ASB. Oh my goodness, you could have told me that last time. So, but, um, she's a freshman. She loves, um, being at Jeff. I love her being so happy. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I just love being on the campus. It brings back a lot of memories, you know? But thank you so much for everything you do, um, for embracing all students and giving them opportunities to try different things. Just for your leadership, I'm, I'm very impressed by your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm always amazed, uh, business prize because I know Jeff's always doing great things, so keep it up. I'm glad to see that, like, as usual, diversity of clubs to get involved with. It's like our superintendent was mentioning earlier, when you had a concert, you always think of things you did in high school. And I remember the clubs I joined, there's some clubs I forgot, like, that we had or could have had. And so starting a club is a lot of energy and a lot of work, maintaining it, um, and then growing it too. Um, I noticed that same, you know, when I was at the college level, you have other things going on in life. Like our trustees mentioning, student athletes and the kind of things that are considered extracurricular are really co-curricular and they're part of our education, uh, mental, physical and of course spiritual. So, uh, um, for all that spirit, I'm glad you keep it up and, um, I can tell, yeah, so keep it up.
Yes, I'm really impressed with all the clubs that you guys have at the school and that you're so inclusive with everyone and making sure everyone is, you know, have a place. And I see that maybe if something is left out, I'm sure somebody bring it up and you guys are always open to, um, you know, bringing other interests in. So keep up the good work and it was great to meet again some of you over the weekend, spending time with you guys. Did a great work over the weekend, so keep it up.
Well, behind every great ASB is a wonderful teacher, so shout out to teacher in the back. Thank you. Taylor has always brought a fantastic program. I've always been super impressed with the leadership that goes into being a part of her ASB. And so this is again, a great group of student leaders that have come here. And I just want to thank you for stepping up because high school is challenging without adding on extra layers. And, uh, seven in the morning for any student is really hard. So that just shows a level of commitment. So thank you for being that dedicated to, well, as teenagers, you're willing to get up on a weekday in the morning to get to school. And, um, again, we have our student trustees and yours is Erica Cardoso. And so the board, like you said, student voices is equal to us. And making it to board meetings are hard, but if you tell Erica any issues that you have, she'll be sure to bring that back to us. And then we're always open, our email addresses are on our website. So if you need to let us know anything or reach out to us, please feel free to do so because you are our customers. We want to make sure that we're serving you guys all really well. So thank you for coming out on finals.
Fantastic presentation, really just wonderful update on what's been going on this past semester. And I just want to share with you that anytime you have a recycling drive, I, I know that Mr. Hada will let me know because I did contribute to you, especially when you're battling the staff, so.
Two, two big bags and Ms. Deleon saw us taking it out of the car. She's not happy.
Yeah, we, I've, I've got a lot, so I will always make sure that my contribution will go to you guys next year. I know them fighting words with somebody in the back, but that's okay. But, but again, fantastic report and just grateful that you guys are putting in some creative effort into the work that you're doing. And it's, you know, even just the, um, you know, the fact that each class has to host a campus cleanup, I think is a phenomenal idea. That's something that would, I'd love to see taken back to the other campuses as well. So thank you. If you want, if you want to add, Dr. Gloria?
I don't think so. I have my grisly sweatshirt.
And, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Eh, go study. Okay. All right. Item 13, consent agenda. Is there a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item 14, Ms. Bell, do we, have we received any blue cards this evening? Then we'll move on to item 15A1, the California School Dashboard Report. Ms. Baca?
Good evening, President. I think good evening, members of the board. Tonight I'll be presenting the information from our California School Dashboard. So I'll be covering briefly about the local indicator review, um, local indicator metrics and also the state indicators. That includes academics, English learner progress indicator, college and career indicator, graduation rate, suspension rate, some possible root causes and actions and services that we are doing to address, um, some of the issues that we have. So the dashboard has a new look. Ta-da. It is simpler to use and easier to understand. And instead of the pies, it is now graphically displayed as a gauge with five different colored segments.
I'm not sure that's easier.
It's like, you know, dashboard like.
Oh my god.
With red as, um, being the lowest performance and blue is the highest performance and green is the target color. And the arrows will point to the performance level for the dashboard. The other, um, new information this year is that they have included the DAS indicator, which is, it stands for Dashboard Alternative School Status. And this is the status for our continuation school. So the DAS information is actually included within our, um, district scores. So when we see the scores, their scores are also included. So about a month ago, I presented the local indicators. They included the basic conditions, implementation of state standards, parent engagement, school climate and access to a broad course of study. And that information is collected and submitted by us, the district. And I'm proud to say that we met all of those indicators. And now I'll be focusing on the six state indicators, which includes academics, um, English learner progress, graduate. Chronic absenteeism is not included for the high schools. It's only, um, for the elementary and middle schools. And one of the reason, well, there are two reasons. Um, the State Board of Education thinks that the academic should weigh a little heavier than the social and, um, s- school climate. So if they added the chronic absenteeism, it will pretty much balance it out and they didn't like that. And also, they also said that, um, if a student is performing well with a graduation requirement in the college career indicator, most likely they are in school almost every day. So that's one of the reasons for not including chronic absenteeism for the high school. But my guess is that this will probably be included, if not next year, the following year. The data for these indicators are collected from various sources, including CalPads, and outside vendors like the College Board and the CDE uploads this data. So how do we get a color? A color is based on the status for the current year. So it's either very low and all the way up to very high. And they also compare that to whether the results improved from last year. So the categories declined significantly from prior year, all the way to increase significantly from prior year. And where the columns and the rows intersect gives you a color. So again, red is the lowest and blue is the highest. Just want to point out that in order to receive a color, each subgroup, um, or the district has to have at least 30 students in the current year and the prior year. The only exception is for the homeless students and foster youth, where the number of students has to be at least 15 students. So for the academic indicator, um, last year we did not have to report, um, the, or they did not report the academic indicator for high school. However, this year with SSA state plan, we had to include the academic indicator. And that's essentially smarter balanced scores for English Language Arts and Math. And it is based on the average student distance from the lowest possible grade for the standard met achievement for both ELA and math. So who counts is the grade 11 students who are continuously enrolled from the fall census date to the first day of testing. And as the formula, each student's distance from standard is calculated separately and then all the distances are combined to determine an average. The average distance is divided by the total number of assessments with valid scores. Um, the 2018 scores then were subtracted from the 2017 scores to obtain the change. If the district has less than 95% participation, any points below that 95% gets subtracted by 0.25%. So this is our scorecard, well, the scorecard for our district. Um, for English Language Arts, we received a yellow with 21.6 points above the, the standard, but we declined 14.9 points. For mathematics, we also received a yellow and it's 45.9 points below the standard, but we only declined by 6.6 points. At the bottom is the equity report. So it tells you how many subgroups fall into that, um, color. So for English Language Arts, we see that there are two groups in the red, two groups in the orange, one in yellow, three in green and zero in blue. And these are the groups that were separated by the colors. So none for the blue, uh, for ELA, Asian Filipino, two or more. For yellow, it's white, orange, Hispanic and socioeconomically disadvantaged. And red for English learners and students with disabilities. And it's, um, similar for math, only, um, Hispanic is added for math. The next indicator is the English Language Progress Indicator. And this is a transition year for this indicator as we had only given the summative LPAC in the spring. So we actually will not see a status and change and color until the 2020 dashboard. And so this just reports the percentage of students and how they performed on the LPAC. As you can see, 14.1% were developed. For the College and Career Indicator, um, it's a little more complicated to calculate because there are different pathways for college and career. And in the past, the students who were eligible to take the California alternate assessments were excluded. But for this year, it's actually included in the calculation. So again, um, college and career, um, the goal is for them to be in the prepared level on the College and Career Indicator. And what does that mean? Everybody has to have a high school diploma and they either have to meet one of these criteria. So one is advanced placement exams. The student needs to get at least a score of a three on at least two exams during their time in high school. Another pathway is the IB exam. We do not have that, um, program at our school. But to be eligible, they need a score of four on two exams. Or they could qualify through the smarter balanced assessments by receiving at least a standard met in both ELA and mathematics. And college credit courses, um, are both dual enrollment courses and concurrent enrollment courses. So in order to meet this criteria, a student has to take at least two semesters or three quarters of either dual enrollment or concurrent enrollment class and receive at least a C minus. Another pathway is the State Seal of Bilitaracy, and this is new for this year. And to qualify for that, they need a 2.0 overall GPA in their English classes for four years, receive at least a standard met and the ELA smarter balance, and demonstrate proficiency in one of the assessments for, um, word languages. So for instance, AP exams or SAT two. And the leadership and military is, we do not have, but is a physical conditioning program aimed to promote military values. So this is like ROTC. The other two pathway is through an A through G completion. So these are the courses necessary to meet the UCCSU requirements. But the A through G completion is not enough. They need to meet other criteria on either the left-hand side or the right-hand side. The same thing with CTE pathways. So CTE pathways is that they have to complete a sequence of course that's at least 300 hours. And they need to complete a capstone course with a C minus or better. Again, being in a CTE pathway is not enough. You either need to combine it with smarter balanced assessments or college credit course. So as you can see, it's a little more complicated. There's different ways to be deemed as prepared for college and career. So for this indicator, our score is green, which is actually the highest, uh, for this year's dashboard. And 44.6 of our students are prepared and we increased by 5.3%. And out of the 44.6%, um, which is about 570 students or so, 5.5% met it through the CTE pathway, 79.3 through the smarter balanced scores, 0% through the college work, but it doesn't mean that we did not have anybody take concurrent enrollment classes. In fact, they were tagging our student information system. But what had happened was there was a technical glitch that, um, that happened where the courses were not reported into CalPads properly. So I had already spoken with Synergy and they are developing a patch to make sure that this is added for the following year. But when I calculated, um, the number of students who took a concurrent enrollment class last year who met this criteria, there's about 3.4% of our students. And this percentage should, should increase next year because we have dual enrollment classes, um, that we started this year. And this percentage should should increase next year because we have dual enrollment classes um that we started this year. Um, so there are thirty-three point eight percent students who met through the advanced placement, seventy-seven point one through A through G eligibility, and two point five through the state seal of biliteracy. Please keep in mind that some students met one or more of those criterias. So they could have met it through the CTE and the college work and everything else. And on the right-hand side are the student groups um by performance level. And that is the breakdown for college and career. So for graduation rate is, which is probably um the indicator that had the most changes for this year. So there were a few changes that had happened based on the audit findings from the US Department of Education. So one change is that students who transfer to an adult school, um, adult education program or community college during the four years without earning a regular high school diploma will no longer be removed from the cohort. They're part of the denominator. They will now remain in the cohort and be counted as dropouts. Students who receive an adult education diploma will no longer be counted as a traditional high school graduates since they do not meet the definition for receiving a high school diploma. They will be included in the denominator, but not the numerator. And students who pass the California High School Proficiency Exam do also do not meet the federal regulation for a regular high school diploma. Therefore, these students will no longer be counted as a traditional high school graduates. And they will be included in the denominator, but not in the numerator. So they are dropouts. So um note that the graduation rate is based on the four-year cohort. And it's also combined with the dashboard alternative school status. Um, to be a graduate, they needed to earn a traditional high school diploma. And again, as I mentioned earlier, those are the non-graduates now. And to be part of the cohort, they need to be enrolled um in grade nine four years ago. And they are, what, who's included in this are the students that dropped out over the four years who transferred in, who lost transfers, which really means exited out as a transfer, but never enrolled in another school in California. And then we take out the students that transferred out, immigrated, or died during the four years. So um for the students that left the country, what the state is also now saying is that we have to have something in writing from the parents or the guardian saying that the students will be leaving the country. And they can't just be, you know, verbal anymore. We need to keep something in writing in case we get audited for that. Um, and they will also keep in this cohort, which is actually the denominator, the early grads. So our status for the graduation rate is orange. And it is actually um, it's eighty-eight point seven, declined three point one percent. Last year, we had a green status. And because of all of the combination of changing the methodology, the timeline for pulling this information from CalPads was also moved. It used to be um where we had until December. This was pulled in August. Um, changes in personnel. And we also had some data entry issues where completion status were not um tagged appropriately. And because of all of that combination, we ended up in the orange. And this is how um our students perform for each group. So this is the dashboard alternative school status for the graduation rate. I wanted to point this out because this is a little different, is a modified version. So overall, THORN has a um level of orange, seventy, seventy-one percent graduate and declined by fifteen point eight percent. Their graduation, in order to be counted as a graduate though, there are three requirements. They have to be either grades eleven or twelve, and they needed a certificate requirement. And the certificate requirement is one of those in the middle. So they either receive a standard diploma. So for um alternative schools, the Chesapeake counts. The GED also counts, adult education, early graduates, and a certificate of completion if they're eligible for the alternate assessment. And there's also an enrollment day requirement of ninety days um of continuous enrollment and thirty days if they belong to a group such as foster and homeless. So as you can see, it's quite complicated and has changed a lot. So the DAS graduation rate is combined with the four-year graduation rate for the districts. And that is the formula. For suspension rate, um, this one is not as complicated as the other indicators. But one thing to keep in mind is that the denominator for this student is the cumulative enrollment, which really means that they counted all of the students enrolled from the beginning of the school to the end of the school day, so, or end of the school year. So if a student is only even enrolled for one day, they will count as the denominator for suspension. So again, um, student groups of thirty or more um that are cumulatively enrolled, both in the current and prior year, will receive a performance level in in this, in this indicator. To um define suspension, if a student is suspended more than once, the student will only count as once. So it's unduplicated. And also, they will count both in-school and out-of-school suspension. So the formula for this indicator is the number of students suspended in seventeen eighteen divided by the cumulative enrollment. And then they look at the change to receive a color. And the color for our district is is yellow, where six point four students were suspended at least once. Um, last year, we were in orange, so this is an improvement from last year. And these are the student groups by performance le- um level with English learner, specific islanders, and students with disabilities in the red. This is a snapshot of the school level results. Um, as you can see, most of our students, um, are schools in green, yellow, or orange. And none of our schools are in red overall. However, um, the state is now looking at specific subgroups. So we actually qualify for differentiated assistance based on three priority areas for two groups. Um, for student achievement, student engagement, and school climate, both for English learners and students with disabilities. So we have been contacted by the San Mateo County Office um to meet with our differentiated assistance team. And what they would like us to do is to do a deep dive on figuring out the possible root causes for our challenges. And um Dr. Deloria had mentioned that we have already reviewed and analyzed and looked at our possible root causes and actually have begun planning what we're going to do to address the issues. These are through meetings from um significant disproportionality from EdTrust West and all of the meetings that we have with our EL Department and Special Education Department. So some possible root causes, um, and again, this all came up from the conversation with EdTrust West and other meetings, is um implicit bias, lack of coherent and sequenced curriculum, staff turnover and shortage, lack of time built within the day for additional supports, lack of professional training on tier-one supports, insufficient time for meaningful collaboration, limited access to rigorous courses, grading practices, and inconsistent data entry practices. So some of the things that we are doing to address these issues is um training our staff with constructing meaning for explicit language instruction. And again, this is um our second year of implementation. We just finished training two cohorts of about forty teachers. Um, and there is a request for another cohort in the spring. And our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Lori Robinson, actually became a certified presenter and will be able to lead um this PD for our district in the spring. Um, we've also cir- partnered up with Circle Up to address implicit bias. We are also working on scope and sequence for all of our content areas. And we're also exploring some ways to adjust the schedules to accommodate some intervention time during the school day. We're also looking at positive behavior interventions and supports to address discipline. And we are in the process of revising our discipline matrix. So there's a lot more um actions and services that we are doing to address this. And our teachers are working really hard and administrators in making sure that we provide what our students need in order to be successful in these areas. And that is it.
Questions?
Thank you for the presentation, very thorough. Seeing the dashboard at various times of the year, I think it's always important to kind of monitor progress, just understand how it's working. Uh, I think it's hard, and I know we always have discussions in terms of standardized testing and and even just standardizing the metrics around our performance to see where the root causes are. Although I'm glad they're identified possible causes, because that's how we get there. Um, and a collaboration through um through PDS and PLC, uh, district-wide. I guess one question I want to have is specific, um, because of the denominator and numerator, how this is being configured in terms of our cohort and who dropouts are and aren't and how that's classified? Um, in special education, um, there are students who will be on a certificate track. And that's set almost from freshman year on, um, because of their needs. Is this only being configured for the DAS cohort, or is it also the four-year cohort?
So
Considered not graduates? Or are they considered graduates?
If they are in the trid- the comprehensive high school, then they will count as the traditional four-year graduation cohort. And they will be counted as um a non-grad if they receive a certificate of completion. However, if they are at Thornton and they receive a certificate of completion and they meet all of the other requirements, then they could be counted as a graduate at that school.
Well, I would say, okay, thank you for letting me clarify on that. Um, some students uh in my severe programs traditionally will simply be on a cert track. And so I think that's unfair, several levels, lack of equity. I guess this is a state barometer in terms of performance, so that uh should be addressed at that level. But um that would almost mandate that our students who have those needs go to an alternative school, which, you know, we don't uh necessarily do that, um, at least not in every sense. And so I just wanna point that out, and I know that you did clarify that about it, wanna highlight that. Um, also, have you heard any discussion of this in terms of changing that narrative or that gauge?
I have not heard anything about it, but I will not be surprised if it changes again. Um, things change constantly. Um, so I don't know what's gonna happen for the following year. Um, it may change. Because again, they're still playing, you know, this is their second year. They've already changed the graduation rate. At first, they said we were, you know, gonna be reviewed for chronic absenteeism, and all of a sudden, we're not. Um, there's just a lot of things happening right now at the state level. And some of this also happened because of ESA, because they will not approve, you know, the California's plan if it did not meet some of these criteria.
So I have a couple of questions on the ins- inconsistent data entry practices. So um, what are we doing? So I, I mean, I think these are connected where we have staff toe nerve and shortage, which is connected to this consistent data entry, and also the lack of time built within the day for additional supports. Um, because I don't wanna fix all the other issues, like we work through, we put some bias. And we increase our rigor, but if we still don't report the actual, what we're doing that has reflected on the dashboard, that could cause additional issues. So um, I mean, we don't have to answer the question here, but I'm just wondering, what do we need to make sure that we provide the time within the day for additional support? What does that look like?
So I just wanna say that I completely agree with you. And when I figured out one of the reasons why we're in orange for graduation rate is because of that data entry issues, um, I was pretty upset. Um, and so what we have done so far is in our Ed Services meeting, we met and looked at each one of these dashboards and figured out which key staff will be responsible with the checks and balances for these um data pieces. It will start at the school site level with classified, certificated, and administrators as well. So we identified positions and how often this will be reviewed at the school site level. And we also brought it up to the district level that when are we going to review what is entered at the school site level? Because I don't want, you know, at the end of the year, when everything is reported to CalPads, all of a sudden, we have all sorts of issues. Um, we've also, um, we are meeting with the registrars every month now. Before, it was about two times um per semester. But this year, we are meeting, um, I believe it's every Thursdays of the month to address some data issues. Um, for last, yesterday, in our Ed Services team, we actually looked at the suspension data. And I made sure that our directors understand what it means to look at CalPads or Student Information System and actually dig deep. So we have scheduled meetings, a meeting with our vice principals, so they can be trained as well, so that they too will be reviewing this data on um a regular basis.
So that's, that was gonna be my second question, but the like, the vice principal will serve as like the second set of eyes so that there's like a check of what's going on. Um, and then in terms of grading practices, um, I mean, I know like Oceana had started with changing grading practices. I mean, is that what we're talking about, like, looking at?
Probably in um far in the future, but that is the goal. But I know that, you know, our goal first is to really align our curriculum and have it be coherent so that we can, you know, look at our grading practices after that.
One of the things that, practices that we uncovered this semester, only because I'm teaching, is we have, we have a practice in this district of a student gets, it doesn't matter what grade they get in their math class. If they get it passed with a D minus or better, they automatically move on. Now, that wouldn't be so bad if there was something happening during the summer or extra support the next year. But what's been happening is students have been taking like math course one in their freshman year. They get a D minus, then the next year, they go to a bridge course, they get a C or a D minus, then they come to a math course two class. And now the math course two teacher has to figure out, how do you catch them up on? Now imagine that happening, and then they're a junior. So this is something that Ms. Baca and the math department chairs are gonna take on and discuss. Um, I mean, we're really, students are caught between a rock and a hard place, right? They're forced to move on, but they don't know what they need to know. So something that Ms. Baca and the math chairs are gonna be looking at.
And then the last question, hardest uh topic is discipline. Um, and, you know, I know we, I think at some point, just to add that as an agenda item, because it's just a really complicated issue. And there are things that we would like to see done, but then also um take into consideration, what does the staff need and have that be more collaborative moving forward so that we're not constantly making changes and efforts, but it's not really taking hold in the classroom because there's not buy-in to what we're doing. So um, how can we do that more collaboratively so that everyone's So how can we do that more collaboratively so that everyone's needs are being met in a way that is hopeful to our students and helpful to our teachers and staff? You know, because again, I mean, I've been focusing on discipline for a long time, this interest issue that is very, means a lot to me because of the bias issue. But at the same time, you know, I don't want it to be something that people feel like they have to do, but more something that they feel like, I want to be a part of this change. That's all I have.
I'm just still just trying to wrap my head around reading the colors, right? Because you can, you can have an orange, but only because you actually improved from a red, or you can have an orange because you declined from a yellow. And so it's, so it's just, it's just, you know, it's hard when you just look at the one slide that shows the summary, it doesn't actually say anything, right? So it's about going into the...
Or what I found out is if you don't certify in CalPads, you get an automatic orange. So...
You know, because like, like if, like just pull it up, if I'm looking at just the ELA or the math scores when it says seventeen point nine points above standard or below standard, what's standard?
So it's different per grade level. So the standard for math, I believe it's like twenty-six fifty-three.
Oh, okay, from that number.
So it's the, yeah.
Got it, okay. Took, took, all right, I have to put on that hat then. Okay. No, that...
The twenty-five eighty-three for math or for ELA and twenty-six twenty-eight for math. So that is standard and it's, it will vary.
Right, so if I, so if I'm, so, all right, let me, I'm just going back to one of these slides. Yeah, and I pulled up the dashboard myself just so I could see what it means live, right? So if I'm going back up, I guess which, I can't even remember which slide that was, probably. Slide number nine, right? For, whereas a district for, for ELA, we're twenty-one point six points above standard, but we actually declined fourteen point nine points, so that's what gets us to yellow. So if I look at the, how you get to the yellow color, what color were we before versus where we are today, right? No, that makes total sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough because on this particular issue, I like that we are compared to ourselves in comparison to other schools and our districts that have different resources. But at the same time, it is a little confusing, you know?
I'm just trying to figure out a way, how do we talk to a parent?
Yeah.
You know, how to tell a community, you know, what, what this means, you know, it's, that's, that's, that's the hard part, at least, you know, I, just as I was getting used to the, to the pie chart, now all this and my head's still spinning around it a bit.
You can imagine how difficult it is for the principals, because, you know, where's the work happening? It's happening at the schools and in the classrooms. We have a principal here tonight, and when things keep changing like this, then we have to, to the best that we can, make sure the principals understand it. And then they have to go back and try to explain it to their staff, because that's where we really need the commitment, right? We need the commitment from, from the school level. So it would be nice to stick with something for a while so that people aren't saying, sure, Ms. Carey, and what, what will be, what will be the changes next year? So it'd be really nice, policymakers, stick with it for a while, that we can make some progress.
And the ELA drop was, I mean, that was largely due to that entry or...
Or graduation rates.
Right, so, yeah.
Can you clarify what that, what that color was?
If it wasn't for data entry issues, we probably would be in probably yellow the lowest, because we were in green last year.
Example, there's a field in Synergy where, where you have to say what a senior, when a senior leaves the district, where are they going? So if some, any student, when they leave our district, where are they going? And if you're sloppy and you don't follow up to make sure that they enrolled somewhere else, that field is empty and it's going to show up as, as a dropout. If we're not careful with marking our, our seniors who graduate during summer school, they count as a dropout. You have to be really careful and meticulous with all of this data. It just takes one person to forget a couple of things and that's what can happen.
Okay. But I mean, with that entry, so I was thinking of just somebody who may be just specifically doing that entry or something like that, because this is huge that incorrect data entry is causing us loss of colors, you know?
Yes, and it's, it's a common thing with, throughout the county, and that has been their request to the superintendent for the county, because just understanding how CalPads and the Student Information System and that bridge between the two is very difficult. And finding that person to understand both sides has been a challenge for many, many districts. And just really understanding what field in Synergy will be reported to CalPads and being able to decipher what is really wrong with this picture and then correct it.
How much of our drop is due to the data entry versus the actual change in the formula?
I can't do the calculation yet, but...
I mean, yeah, I mean, just ballparked.
With your gut feeling.
What, what do you think?
Graduation rates?
Yeah.
Well, probably, we probably would have been, remained the same.
And ELA too?
For the ELA, I'm not, we did not have the ELA last year as an academic indicator. And this is the first time that we're actually looking at that, because before it was part of the college and career indicator, and now they separated it from the distance from standard.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, you know, to point out, like, here is the old five by five grid that, you know, if you are in very low and then you increase, you could be in orange. And if you also click on the view detailed data, this is for Andy, and I'll give you like raw numbers and percentages. So to get there, you go to the dashboard and click on view additional reports. And here's now the five by five grid and more information about college and career and the participation rate, and it will give you more information.
Wait, did you count this?
Yeah, I didn't do that until the dashboard.
Exciting.
But it's help, it's, I mean, thank you, it's helpful to know because again, it's how do, you know, is the orange that we're at a good orange or is it, you know, did we improve from red or did we go down to yellow? That's really, you know...
A little plus or minus.
Yeah.
Orange plus, orange minus. That would be helpful.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else?
Well, I really appreciate, I mean, helping and...
Try to understand it.
But do you think that, like, the change in what they consider a dropout is...
It has affected our, especially for the English learners, because we've had several students that transferred to adult school and actually graduated from adult school and before they counted as, you know...
Because it seems like, it makes us seem unsuccessful, you know, like we're not serving our students. And, you know, they're not, they're considered dropouts because they didn't graduate a certain way, you know, or they didn't succeed a certain way.
It's not a culturally responsive formula, that's for sure.
No, it's not terrible.
Because we're trying to meet students where they are and provide the program that they need, and so not everybody can follow that traditional pathway.
No, no.
Next year, they will also have the five-year graduation rate included, because we have some students that will return the fifth year.
If they go to adult school and they get their, their high school diploma, that does count, that does count for us.
For the fifth year?
Which is any student that goes, if they leave us and they go to adult school and they get their high school diploma, you don't get that credit?
Right, you don't, you don't get the credit anymore.
I thought it was just ED, but it's also high school diploma?
It's also...
So we're getting dinged on the denominator and the numerator, it's a double Emmy.
And the rationale for that?
It's a finding from the US Department of Education, being defined as not traditionally a high school graduate, a tradition.
But is that a huge number for us? I mean, that's not really affecting our number that much.
For ELs, there's more ELs than not, yeah.
But not the graduation rate.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Baca, for which indicator is it that the private school data counts now?
We haven't, we don't have anything where the private school data counts.
I think there's something where the suspensions from kids who were in non...
Oh, we now have to report non-public school suspensions, but that will be part of data quest instead of the dashboard.
The non-public school isn't a private school?
I meant non-public.
So, yeah, so we now are requesting all of the suspension data from our non-public school to send it to us so that we can input it in our student information system, because as you know, they all have their own system. And we also now have to report all violations, whether they're, you know, resulted in a suspension or not, and whether there is an other means of consequences, so they're collecting that information too now.
Why would, why would we need to be reporting that? I don't understand.
CalPads is asking, asks for that information, so they are tracking.
They're still our students.
They're still our students. So it'll show up as our district and they'll list the schools and they'll have the NPAs.
And I don't have a problem with that, because I feel like, I mean, this is special education students. If they're out of school or they're being suspended all the time, that is something that we should be keeping a track, keeping track of. I mean, I, I think it's just more about, I mean, the way they're trying to go about this, I mean, I've always said trying, you know, legislating responsibility is a really hard thing, and the way you go about it is never really, there's no really perfect solution. But, I mean, and this is not an issue in our district, but you know, I come from a district that did have a problem with pushing kids out into non-public schools. So if you know that you're still going to be held accountable, whether or not your child, the student is here in a non-public school, then you may, if it's not worth the effort, you may just make the effort of keeping the student here, especially with, you know, certain students that are considered behavior issues in the special education field, they just get farmed out. So I get the rationale, but it's just another thing to keep track of, which I understand that's a challenge.
Any, anyone else, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Baca. All right. Administration fifteen B, we'll take fifteen B one through fifteen B six together. Dr. Deloria?
I just point out that there's a cluster of HR ones here that have to do with dismissal, termination, things like that. But in the, in there, there's also one that Ms. Baca worked on, and that's sixty-one fifty-two point one. Remember a couple of years ago, California passed a law that required in school districts within a certain number of days of, of students freshman year, you had to give them some kind of a valid and reliable assessment that validated their placement. So we have, and you also have to talk about what your placement criteria are. So we weren't in compliance, and so Ms. Baca went ahead and made those corrections. In fact, we didn't have the regulation at all, so she went ahead and created that one. Now we are in compliance.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Baca.
So I had a few questions on the, first on the math one. That, that I know that, it was just, to me was the percentage, and you're going to have to answer this thing because I didn't, I didn't tell you ahead of time, but the percentage of students that are, that fall into the realm of they're that, they're super close to the line and we're relying on teacher recommendation, like how many students that is? We could just, me or just email the board?
Add it in the weekly recap, there's not that many.
I figured it was, okay. Because I, I was like, it was a large amount and maybe I, I wasn't sure about using, relying back, because I think the whole point of not using teacher, you know, recommendations is because of this bias and that. Usually it's those kids that are right on the line that usually fall into the issue bias, but it was not a huge number.
Are we using that as...
I believe that was what was agreed during the superintendent's meeting in October, where the student has to score a standard exceeded on the grade seven and grade eight smarter balance assessment. However, if they are right on the line or the bubble, then the teacher with, you know, other means can make a recommendation, whether to place them in math course two or keep in one.
Not to lower them, it's just, it's more...
It's just to lift them, but I'm saying that it's usually those kids that are right on the cusp, like from the data that I've seen about, you know, who gets moved on it, who's, where the bias is happening the most is usually the kids that are right on the cuffs. And that, that's where teacher recommendation usually goes negative for kids of color instead of positive. So I was like, how many students is in, if it's a significant amount of students, then maybe we want to look at that a little closer than just relying on teacher recommendation. And then the other one was, I believe in the sexual harassment, that we really, we removed gender in one area in the sexual harassment. We were, it said she or he, and we replaced it with individual, but that would, so in the line two... This is in the BP.
For the regulation.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, in the AR four-one-one-nine. And that, in line two...
So that was just something that CSBA recommended to avoid the pronoun altogether and put the individual.
Right, but it's only that area, it's, there's him or her used in other places in this document, but we only, it's only changed in that one spot.
I can take, I can take a look at it.
Yeah, I printed it and I forgot to bring it with me.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay, and I can email it. And then the same thing was for...
They're not necessarily consistent across policies and regs, so I...
Right. And the professional standards. I'm trying to open that AR.
Well, the professional standards, there was no change, except that you have to post them on your website. So there may be language that's old, but that wasn't what was recommended to be changed.
Okay.
So forty-one nineteen point two-one. The only, the only change is to add that you have to post it on your websites and in other, including other documents like the employees' annual notifications.
Okay.
Rest of the policy wasn't changed at all.
Okay, that was, okay, that answers my question. That's all I have, thank you.
That's what I mean, they're not consistent.
I know, it was just weird to me, I was like, this seems conflicting, but okay, got it. And these, I was like, for the first time, I'm reading board policy and I was having a lot of questions.
Not a lot of questions.
Anything else for the, for fifteen B one through B six? Okay, we'll move on to fifteen B seven, proposed twenty nineteen twenty board meeting schedule. Ms. Bell, you're presenting this.
I am. Good evening, President Lee and members of the board. About a month ago, Dr. Deloria asked me to look into doing the board meeting schedule for the eighteen, well, excuse me, the nineteen twenty school year. So I kind of waited until the calendar was approved for that school year before scheduling the meetings. So before you or in the presentation or in the agenda, I want to add, and I color coded the dates. Highlighted are the actual board meeting dates. The green is the Student Advisory Council meetings, and the magenta pink color is for the school site board meetings. Now again, these are just proposed dates. I'd like for you guys to take a look at them. Of course, meetings are usually scheduled first and third Tuesdays of each month, but there are, there are some breaks that fall on the first and third weeks of the month, so it was better, it was actually advised by Dr. Deloria that are not scheduled, because some, some of you may decide to take on, you know, take a break, vacation, whatever the case may be.
You might take a vacation.
What?
Because at first I did, I admit, I did have them scheduled, but then she's like, I redid it, so just whenever you get a chance, if you haven't already, just take a look. Once everything is approved, I'll put it to consent and I'll actually put a listing, not just in the calendar, but in actual...
Just a listing of the dates, okay.
So just a couple of comments?
So just a couple of comments. One of the things I asked her to do was to go to one meeting in December. We're, we're one of the few districts that have two in December. This is just a real hard week with exams and everything, so that's one thing I would ask you to consider.
And we didn't put any retreats in, so I didn't know if you wanted to do like four, you know, four Saturdays a year ago, like I know, um, Ms. Bell, I was like, so have her study session in January on budget. She's not the only one, I like to have them too. But if you'd like to, we could sit down and, and pick those dates. I think the sooner that we all have those dates, it's easier for us to clear our schedules to make sure that we can attend. So do you have a thought of how many Saturdays you want, how many retreats?
I, I did actually propose some.
Did you?
At the bottom.
Oh, I didn't see.
In the block.
Oh, wow.
Or the little keys. Or dates. So if you wanted to-
You have five there.
Oh, five, um.
Five. Let's get close.
Oh, wow. Actually makes, actually the time, the timing makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I don't know about June twenty-seventh.
Things that we don't really do and we don't look at anymore. As we don't really have a governance calendar where we look at what are important dates where we need to meet. So maybe our, maybe we got our next retreat that's coming up. I know that-
We have, we have a governance calendar on the website that we've had in the past, but we haven't been, it's really old, so.
Yeah, why don't we do that at the next retreat? Yeah, let's try that. Okay. Any other comments, questions on the proposed calendar as well as the proposed retreat dates?
The other thing Ms. Bell did is, um, she, she worked with Jake on getting it, our board calendar for this year posted on our website. It's not easy to find. There was someone from the community who emailed me and said, can you tell me where your board meeting dates are? And, and just don't tell me it's on the website, kind of tell me where, and I could not find it. I mean, you can find where the previous meetings were and when our current is, but if you wanted to know what was happening in the future. So Ms. Bell did go ahead and create that, posted it, and Jake posted that for us.
Great. Okay. If nothing else, we'll move on. Item sixteen A one, contract with LinkedIn, Ms. Presta.
I don't think I've ever used the microphone. I'm not gonna go through. Oh, I wasn't planning on actually going through the whole PowerPoint, but I can if you'd like. So I reached out to LinkedIn recruiter, um, earlier this year, mostly because I had seen on LinkedIn some school districts that were posting jobs. Oakland Unified was the one that kept popping into my LinkedIn feed, and I was thinking, gosh, we should be doing this. Um, and so I reached out and had a few different conversations. Actually, the first conversation was with an Oceana grad who works at LinkedIn recruiting. And so she spoke highly of it, I spoke then kind of to the next level. Had a big conversation with him, much longer PowerPoint, and I was convinced that it was a good idea. So then I brought it to the executive cabinet and we had a conversation again, um, sort of with this, this smaller slideshow. So I included the slideshow so you could just see some of the information that he shared with us. But essentially, and I, I'm happy to go through that right now if you'd like, um, ah, but I don't need to, so let me know. I'm figuring we had a long meeting already. But essentially, what this will allow us to do is to post, we're gonna have five slots that we can have at, at, at any given time of current jobs that we're posting. This is obviously going to be a pool for teachers, administrators, professional people, pretty much. We're, I'm looking at some other ways of publicizing other jobs that we need to fill just as urgently. But I think, and social media is a great way to do it, I don't think LinkedIn is the way for all of the jobs. At any rate, this will allow us to actively recruit all year long for positions. And I was a little skeptical, I loved the acts, but I still was a little skeptical. And so, um, the young man ran me through, okay, what are you currently looking for? So I had him look for a math teacher position. And so, what's that?
E three.
Yeah, exactly. And so he said, okay, so currently, right now, in LinkedIn, in your area, these people, and he did a couple of little clicks, and said, these people are actively looking right now. And I can then send out with like a, a hit of a button, fifty emails to these people saying, hey, I'd like to talk with you, here's our job. So that's just one way. And the other thing that was really, um, sort of stood out to me, this LinkedIn nonprofit talent solutions is about a year old. So they're really building it up. It's, LinkedIn is growing a lot. And they've got, I forget what they call them, but like I'll have a little representative that's gonna sort of help me with this as well. And I was thinking of Daly City Youth Health Center, for instance. We're looking for an executive director. We don't really have a great way to recruit for that. If we hire recruiting, uh, a search firm, it's at least twenty-five thousand dollars, which is not what we can afford. If we post it on Edjoin, that doesn't make sense, that's not the right pool to be fishing in to post a job. Uh, we tried indeed, we didn't get good applicants. And, you know, we're not in the business of looking for health nonprofit directors. So this will serve us well, um, for that need as well. So I think it's gonna be well worth the investment. It's, we get a fifty percent discount, so it's fourteen thousand dollars, it's not cheap. You know, it's a cost. But I think that the cost benefits will outweigh the cost and it'll be a good investment for us. Yeah.
This is great. No, I, I mean, I, I, I know, I know, I've received a lot of recruiter in, in mails.
Yes, from LinkedIn. Exactly. That's how I thought about it, yeah, it's like-
That's the way to do it.
I'm gonna constantly on LinkedIn.
Yeah.
They, they send you an email every week, right, saying, oh, these are jobs that are like, yeah, might, you might be-
Look at all these!
Never know, you might not even be looking for a job, and then it's like-
I get those every week.
Yeah, so-
Hold on, stop waiting.
Maybe I should call LinkedIn and cut that off.
You certainly are kind of tough.
Yeah. I was like, hold on.
Don't think I'm gonna move to Podunk Montana.
But I don't know, I think this is great, thank you.
All right, so this is an action item.
It's an action.
Move that, we approve the contract with LinkedIn.
Question from you? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, thank you very much. All right, item sixteen B one, Board of Trustees Organization Meeting twenty eighteen. Sixteen B one point one. Ding, whoever shall sit in this seat for next year.
Well, I think we should probably have a discussion on it first before we do a nomination. Because I don't think we need, I, do we need the papers?
We've been, we've been, we've been, we've always voted before, so hand vote, I guess. So we can keep doing that.
So we're discussing? Or are you, you're accepting nominations right now?
Let's have a discussion first. Anything to discuss, or do, if you want to do nominations and discuss, we can do that too.
I would say you're doing a good job.
Maybe you want to do it again? That's my discussion.
Their precedent was set when I was, I mean, I, we broke a, at least a thirty-three year cycle of just rotating because, um, when I was, uh, asked to serve in a second consecutive year. And it was because we had hired a new superintendent and our district was going through a lot. And I just know from experience, you know, those were two tough years, five superintendents, including two interim. And, um, I feel like we are on an upswing right now. We have a great superintendent. Continuity meant a lot. And to be, uh, to, and then under Dr. Deloria, actually being a part of the agenda planning and, um, looking beyond the next meeting. You know, looking beyond the next meeting, looking at the vision, the relationships with AFT and, you know, our, our local partnerships. A lot of the stuff we're doing right now is big. I mean, you know, Bond buyer thinks we're pretty, pretty awesome.
Deal of the year.
So, you know.
We're all on all the CSBA coffee cups.
Yes. So for me, I, I think if, if you were willing to, you know, do another year, um, I think for continuity's sake, and you're doing a great job, um, as our leader. And, and I, when I was off for a month and on leave and I missed a few meetings and it kinda, you know, then when I saw you in action in the first meeting, I came back, there was a different confidence in you. And it's like you got your sea legs. And because I know what that's like, I was under a Mr. Minshew, I would, I would, I have, I was a deer in the headlights. So, and then I just kinda, you, you, you got it, you, you're rolling with it constantly. But I think we're headed in a great direction, uh, right now.
So I, we revisit our policy, we brought it forward, Rosie and I brought it forward. I don't remember how I wanna quote this, but when we went to board president training at CSBA, Greg Dennis, uh, does that training. And he was saying that it would be, it's a good idea to have your, if you could, to have your president serve two years. Uh, it's just where you don't really learn how to do it right as we do it the second year. So we had brought that forward, but we, we were voted, we were voted. So to revisit the board policy and see about changing our board policy, just have the president serve for two terms and stuff.
Are we gonna bring that bylaw back?
We probably need to relook at all of our BPs for, for board.
Maybe jump ahead to the nine thousands.
Yeah. Or we could bring that to our study. That's like, because our next work study is, should be, is more focused on us, right?
Our next is budget and LCAP. And then we have a, another, we have the orientation one, we scheduled on a Tuesday following the Saturday one.
And our orientation is just for us.
You know, you, you wanted to have something to go over things with the new board member.
Yeah, so that's what I'm, that's the one, yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
Have the Tuesday, the January Tuesday meeting.
So looking at governance calendar, at our board, we've been looking at a governance handbook. And, um, just having that all put together, so we all have that in one place.
Right, it does. It did take me probably, it took me a few months to sort of get my sea legs and figuring out how to do this thing. And it's been an interesting year, to say the least, with all the stuff we've been doing. I mean, to pass both, uh, the first ever teacher and staff housing bond, as well as the partial tax, and all of the various under, other bond plan that's been an interesting year.
You've had a very successful year, your business?
Yes, as a group, and as a district, we've done some really good things. So I am, I would be willing to continue on with the second year, if you would like me to do so.
So I nominate Andy Lee for president.
It's a very second. All those in favor?
Well, any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Nominations are closed. Nominations are closed.
So now to make the motion, make the motion, are we elect Andy Lee board president?
It's a very second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yes.
I stopped it off, she went elaborate, so. And then she finished it off and you were up.
The real room. All right. Sixteen B one point two, elect a board vice president. Any other discussion, are there any nominations, any discussion? I, in my mind, to continue on with the same theme actually, for con, for board leadership continuity and district leadership continuity, because in my mind, I, I claim that you've done a really great job as well. And I know that your plate is always over full anyway.
Over.
You know, and, and knowing how much, you know, you do with, with the presidency of the San Diego County School Board Association and, and so many other wonderful things that you do, you know, but, you know, your input is always valued. Especially, you know, in the various agenda planning meetings we've had and the conversations we just have in general, just even outside, you know. So.
Aye.
If you're willing to, if you're willing, I would, you know, love to nominate you. All right, so I nominate Kalima Saladin for vice president. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed, all right, is there a motion? Motion to who? Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, all right.
Congratulations.
I think Nick was Nick first and then-
Nick was a motion, and Carla was a second. All right, so now our board clerk. Nominations open and discussions.
So I think this is another one to discuss, oh, Nick, I'll talk to you because I know we have been continually rotating you out. And we also are getting along, everyone's getting along, we all, I don't want to cut you off. But at the same time, I mean, it's just your time and availability to be, uh, here. And I know that you have a lot going on, so. I'm not, it's like.
Yeah.
Just to have that discussion.
Uh, sure, I mean, I think we all play an important role in our capacity as board members, uh, both at these meetings and at other meetings and on sites and in the community. And, uh, I know I've expressed to a few folks, I think, uh, the kind of responsibilities that I tend to, um, like all of us, go beyond just our duties as board members. And this year's been a very hard year on our family and in terms of, uh, work capacity, I will be commuting a bit more than usual. And, uh, I still don't have the capacity to have the same kind of flexibility. I don't know that a clerk's duties are beyond my capacity. I don't think that they're beyond anybody's capacity, to be honest. Uh, I was clerk before, and it's not a lot beyond the board meetings that we were, um, training on or taking on. Although in recent years, uh, the clerk may be called upon to do other things. So I was actually gonna nominate Carla because I think it's good training, or Rosie, if you're interested in doing that again. Because we've all played various roles and as two-time president and all these things, I think it's, as, uh, as a role, as a officer on the board, it's something to consider in terms of those duties, uh, whatever they are.
Yeah, and, you know, I just, before we like, because I was gonna nominate Rosie. But before I did that, I just wanted to have the conversation that the clerk for me is just like, that's the line, the rotation to move on to VP and president. And with the challenges that you have with all the other duties, that's the only reason why I'm not recommending the, or making the nomination, that it's, that it's not that I don't value as a board member or your contribution, right? Or if that's saying anything to that.
Yeah, I would say, um, I think one of the things in terms of a larger discussion, when we have this discussion in terms of like board policies and having two-term presidents or two-year presidents continuity, I think that's very important. I don't know that I would submit all those things because any board member would have a four-year term. How do you even navigate that in terms of providing everybody opportunity and responsibility to serve in every role? Uh, I've served as a clerk and a vice president, and, you know, it's, it's something to consider. But I think more importantly, let's be strategic about how we organize and how we delegate our responsibilities and share them. Because even if you're not a clerk or a vice president or, or president, you still play an important mem, important role as a member of our board, in our community. And, uh, a lot of those things aren't entailed in, uh, board policies or any policy.
It's not, it's not with the title thing, it's really about, you know, the responsibilities we should, we should share. And, and in sharing as, as a group.
Yeah, in professional development. I think in terms of our capacity, uh, we're all doing a lot in various forms. And I think that we're looking at national and state policy in different ways in recent years that probably entail duties that go beyond, um, clerical duties that we do fulfill as a board. So, um, yeah, I think anybody can serve as clerk, and I think it's a good opportunity to do that. I don't think of it as a line of succession necessarily, but I do feel like, once you've done one thing, you can do the next thing and it builds that capacity, so absolutely.
Thank you, and I just, like, let's just have that conversation cut open because I, when you look at, because I, I've been, I just came from some really interesting reorgs, right? Then just now, in Daly City, and, uh, and, you know, I feel like we've had a lot of work done because we're focusing on work and there's not drama in between, between each of us. And I just, I want to keep that way. So, um, I feel like we've all worked really well together, and I want to continue having a very good working relationship with everyone and not have anything in the way. So, you know, let us know if we're stepping out of bounds.
No, no worries. I, I think part of it too is just, um, one of my big, I think, concerns is, is capacity in terms of time and energy. I think every board member, in terms of family responsibilities, in terms of transit, right? Even for our students and staff, getting to all campuses. Um, I really can't attend Ternova functions, you know, past a certain point, because there's no transit. It's a transit desert at a certain point in night. It's dangerous. They have to walk that far, and we've done that sometimes. So, um, those are the kind of things that I think, uh, is, I can do, you know, a lot of the things. And it's, but year in, year out, this year has actually been, um, a little bit more demanding on measure with family. And so, I would defer those responsibilities, at least for a year, to, you know, be able to get ahead of that and play whatever capacity I can more locally.
Awesome. Thank you. I nominate Rosie Tahada for board clerk.
Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Is there a motion?
I move that we elect Rosie Tahada for board clerk.
Your second?
Oh, do we have, I've nominated Carla and Rosie.
Oh, did you nominate? I didn't know.
Wait, wait until, wait until you actually nominate.
I did. Well, I was mentioning that. I don't know if it's special.
Do you want to reopen?
Yeah, well, we open up nominations.
We're just re- even discussion, yeah.
Okay. So, we've got one nomination for Rosie, and are you formally nominating Carla?
Yeah. I mean, are we discussing that, or are we?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought we discussed it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
All right. Nominations are closed. There are two votes. So, how do we do this? All right, so.
Well, no, there's just two nominations.
Two nominations. Is there, all right, is there a mo, is there a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Rosie Tahada. I need to elect Rosie Tahada too.
Is there a second to vote on Rosie?
We're sorry. We can discuss, and I mean, do you, would you like to be board clerk?
I am honored that you guys nominated me, but I'm really trying to get my sea legs here, so I'd rather not. I'd like to serve in the capacity of just trying to learn from you guys and trying to get into the groove of things before I serve at any capacities. I want to do my job well. So, I would rather not if I can. But I really do appreciate that very much, that you have so much confidence in me from, from the get-go.
Rosie, everybody's.
Yes, yes. But, um, you know, I really want to learn from you guys first and observe before I really do anything. So, if I don't have to, I would rather not. Um, and I'm definitely sure that Rosie would be, have more than the capacity as, you know, being a clerk.
Cultivated your declining the nomination?
I am.
We could just, if she just seconds.
Okay, I would like to second Rosie's.
Okay. All right. All those in favor are voting for Rosie Tahada as board clerk. Say aye.
And aye.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, now we have fourteen, I'm sorry, sixteen B one point four, appointing the board secretary.
Yes, please.
Uh, we need a mo, just do a formal motion.
Move that we appoint Dr. Deloye, Superintendent Deloye as our board secretary.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Sixteen B one point five point one, authorized agent for insurance claims, which should be the associate super, associate superintendent for business services. Is there a motion? All those in favor? Aye. Auth, next item, authorized agent for projects and grants, associate superintendent for education services. Is there a motion?
Some.
All those in favor? Aye. Next item, authorized agent for San Mateo County School Insurance Group, associate superintendent for business services. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next item, authorized agent for state surplus, which looks, sounds like it could be any of these positions, or is it all of these positions? Associate superintendent business services, director of maintenance operations, health and safety, and SEEP entrust, trucker SEEP substitute.
Isn't it usually the associate super? I don't think it's all of those.
We'll just, should we just make it the associate super for business services? All right, well, is there a nominee, is there a motion for the associate superintendent business service to be appointed the authorized agent for state surplus? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Authorized signatory for state relocatable classroom program, associate superintendent of business services. Motion?
Second.
Second? Is there a second thing? All right. Those in favor? Aye. Designated officer of the district for the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, associate superintendent business services. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Authorized agent for asbestos hazard emergency response act will be the director of maintenance operations, health, safety, and transportation. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, the authorized agent for school facility program, associate superintendent for business services. Is there a mo, second, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. That was, uh, the second, the second was Carla.
Go back to the first one, sixteen B one five one. Rosie, first or second?
Uh, actually, the first was, Kalima was the first, and Rosie was the second. All right. Sixteen B one point five point nine, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, board liaison assignments.
Do we have the attachment that you can look at?
Yes, along with the current assignments for each one. So, we'll just go down the list. The first item on the list, uh, JHSD, PSD, City of Pacifica, North Coast County Water District Joint Articulation. It's currently me and Nick, and I am happy to, to continue on, since it is where I live.
Happy to continue on, unless somebody else wants to.
Okay. All right, we'll, all right. Okay, moving on down, us and the city of Colma, currently Nick, and I don't think there's, I think there's been a meeting. But if you, if you're happy to continue on, Nick?
Yeah.
All right. Item three, JHSD, City of Daly City, Jefferson Elementary. Last year it was Mr. Lethrow and Ms. Alhoudin. Kalima, do you want to continue on? Is there anybody else who wants to take this?
Do you want to try that?
It's just.
It's the little synopsis of.
I don't think you did meet last year.
Oh, we, but we do need, we will need to meet at some point.
Yeah.
Sure, well, Mike Riley goes to Jefferson. Yes, so.
Perfect. Current parent. Okay, so we'll have Carla and Kalima on item number, for the committee for item number three. JHSD and City of Brisbane, Mr. Lethrow and Ms. Alhoudin last year. Kalima, are you continuing on? She's nodding yes.
I think he needs to call on those.
All right, okay. I'll, I'll take it on.
Thank you.
And then next item, North County Prevention Partnership, the Pacifica Collaborative. It was me and Rosie last year, although I don't think, I was a, I think I made maybe two of their meetings, because they meet monthly.
I think.
And it's, and it's hard, but I'm happy to continue on. It's, I, Mary Beer typically at least loops me in on all of their correspondence. Is there, anybody else wants to join in? Other, otherwise, I'm happy to continue on, on my own as well. Item five, North County Prevention Partnership.
Monthly meetings.
They're monthly.
I think what time, what time?
Usually on a Friday morning from like nine to eleven. That's why, that's why it's tough to make. I do, I've made them a couple of times a year, usually. Okay. All right, I'll continue on. That's fine. All right. Item six, Pacifica School Volunteers. Rosie and I were on it last year. I never made a meeting. I found out that they were notified the other meeting.
No, I think they were searching for an executive director.
I think they have, I think they have. They have somebody now, yeah. But I'm happy to continue on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I have a little more capacity now, so I'll reach out as well. So, I could stay on that.
So, let's see, the, the, the DACH committee.
I think we need this anymore.
We don't? Yeah, that's right, because we don't. All right. We can take that off, then?
Not, we don't need the committee. We don't need to have board members assigned.
Okay.
Which one?
Item seven, the DACH.
So, we're removing seven?
Yeah, well, we can remove seven. The, the JHSD Joint PTA PTO Committee, it was Rosie and Kalima. I presume it's continuing on that way, or?
We never met. We probably should start doing this.
Do you meet with the PTA once a month, or with Sharon, or how is?
Well, they, we did it for one year, where we met twice a year with the presidents of the PTAs and PTOs in our district. And then with our superintendent turnover and everything, we never picked it back up.
Yeah, that's when Doreen was principal.
So, I meet monthly with, with the exec.
I was gonna say, I do meet with them once a month with Sharon.
Is that different than what you're talking about?
Yeah, it sounds different.
Yeah, it's, you meet with the Jefferson county council, but we were meeting with the presidents of each of our PTAs and PTOs.
Or just in our district?
Yes. So, it was just kind of an update. This is what's going on. This is.
Who facilitated those meetings?
I mean, you don't have to do it this way. I mean, we can do it any way we want, really.
Yeah, I mean.
So, a couple of them, since you go to the PTA.
The thing is, is they don't come to Sharon's meetings.
Grace does, and then Warren doesn't, because he has Bible study or something for Jefferson. I don't know. I think, I think the Pacifica ones are PTOs.
He's, we don't meet with the Pacifica PTOs at all.
So, you, Jaycee, you meet with Warren and Grace.
Yeah.
Message received.
Yeah. And it should, we, it should also include the education foundation.
Yes, the foundation should be part of that.
And I also do this site council for Thornton, so I was doing that for a while too. So, I think I talked to Dr. Marango, and he said I'm able to still be involved with them.
Not on the site council.
Not on site council, okay.
Because it's like you're voting twice.
Is it? Okay, okay. No, that's no problem.
So, so the question is, with, with the joint PTA PTO, last year's Rosie and Kalima, is there a change to that?
We never met.
We never met. Like, if we start meeting.
Okay.
Just keep it.
I think we should keep it. Do you both want to do it, or do you want Nick or Carla to maybe consider it? Carla, you want to?
Um, it's up to you if you're okay with, um, either way, you know. It's up to you.
Put you in there.
I knew you were gonna say that.
All right, so Carla and Kalima on item eight.
And then Dr. Deloye with the facilitator of.
Item nine, the CTE committee. It was Rosie and Braxton last year. Rosie, do you want to continue on? Is there someone else who wants to join this committee in lieu of Mr. Lethrow now?
What are those meetings? Are they in the evenings, or Nick could go?
No, they're in the, in the afternoon, aren't they?
Yeah, they're in the afternoon sometimes. The students, students go to.
Well, education committee.
It's the committee that meets and talks about all of the CTE programs. So, you know, like our shop, our culinary arts, fashion.
Journalism.
Journalism. They all meet, and then they also have outside organizations that they're collaborating with come in.
And how often do they meet in the afternoons?
It's just like twice a year.
Twice a year? I can do twice a year.
So, Rosie and Carla for the.
Once a month, ones are hard, but I can do like a couple of times.
CTE, CTE committee, Rosie and, and Carla?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so we, item ten, we could probably remove the general obligation bond oversight committee. It says board member not, not needed, may be removed from board assignments. Yeah, number eleven, partial tax measure Y oversight committee, board member not needed. We can pull that off the list. All right, the district and Daly City Youth Health Center Advisory Committee, Kalima and Nick, you were on it last year. Want to continue on?
So, this is hard for me, because they meet all at, in the morning, and I have to work now.
What time do they meet, and when do they meet?
Um, what time is it? Is it eight?
The Daly City Health Center? Yeah.
Is it a monthly meeting?
I was gonna say.
Um, yes. Monthly, I, I think it might, I can't remember if it's eight or nine.
It's, my, I think it's eight, I think morning. Yeah, it's in the morning.
It's always in the morning. Um, I was, I know that there's been some kind of discussion of change in time, but.
I think if we ever get a new director, which we will at some point, I think there, there is some interest um, on some of the members of the advisory board to make it in the evenings, but some of the members are school employees, like counselors, and so we might have to have, I don't know. I think the new director's gonna have to explore that, but for the time being, we're not making any changes. So, we are continuing to have the meetings, and they are continuing to be in the morning.
It's monthly.
Monthly.
Yeah. Well, I've been, I'm in the board representation at the meetings when, as well as Tina, when I can make it. And right now, I've been dialing in, but it's.
It's a work time, isn't it, for the.
Could probably do it. I can have some flexibility in the mornings with my, with my jobs. I'll take that on. Actually, it's probably better for me to, to keep it in the morning than it would be in the evening naturally right now, so. All right, so I'll take on twelve DC, YHC. All right. Um, San Mateo County School Boards Association, I presume both you, Kalima and Rosie, are gonna continue on as the, or what's the? I know Kalima, you are, obviously. How about you, Rosie?
Excuse me.
You want to go back?
Or when are you guys from?
I mean, you could just be a rep at any time.
Just be a rep.
Yeah.
Okay.
That remains the same. And fourteen, county committee on school board reorganization.
It's just Rosie.
Just Rosie on this.
But I'm on the county committee now, so.
Oh, so a rep from, from us.
It's only one person.
And that, would we have, we can do an alternate as well.
Yeah, we can do an alternate.
Can we, can we maybe do that? Okay.
Sure.
Mr. President.
Sure, I could be an alternate if there's a need for an alternate.
Okay, so it's me and Andy's alternate? Okay.
Yeah. I'd rather not, but it's okay. And lastly, uh, just us and Summit Shasta, it was Nick and Braxton this past year.
It was actually, it was me and Braxton.
Oh, what, it was you and Braxton, okay. Do you want to continue on, Kalima?
Uh, sure.
Did we meet at all?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
So, yeah, it's me and Nick.
I want to continue on, unless somebody else wants to take it. I have only two that I'm currently on, so like I should, I mean, and I can't do that, because they're local and they're here, so.
Okay. All right, how about it? Okay, so Nick and Kalima for the committee with Shasta. All right. I think that's everything. We didn't miss anything, right? All right. Uh, consideration of future agenda items, seventeen A one, review of responses, RFQ for design builders, Ms. Van Rapport.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me.
No, it's.
I just.
It's nine o'clock.
I know, I know. So, I just wanted to put this on future agenda items real quick, um, to make sure that we know that both of these items will be coming as a future agenda item, and prior to the board items, we will have, um, two board members on the committees for selection for both of these. So, the RFQ for the design build will be interviewing potential design builders. And so, the two members that serve on the subcommittee for that, I assume, are going to serve on the, um,
Yes.
on the interview panel. So, that will be January twenty-third, um, and it's all day, tentatively, because we don't know how many responses we're gonna get yet, so we're just blocking out the day. And so, from like eight to three thirty is what I have on the calendar for the room. But, um, it will depend on how many people we actually get, uh, to respond. And so, for convenience, um, I, and it works out with the timeline for the RFP for food service. Uh, those are due on January twenty-first, so it made sense that we could do the evaluation of that RFP on the twenty-third as well, since we already have two board members here. But I don't know if those two board members want to be the ones to do it. So, that one, um, would be just directly after, so like three thirty to four thirty on January twenty-third to go through the food service RFP.
That's fine, since I already did it once. Just stay here, I'll take it.
Hey, there's nothing like spending a winter at the D, winter all day at the DO. All right, I'll, I'll do the food service, since it's just gonna be on the twenty-third.
This is gonna be directly after the.
All right, why not?
Design build.
Let's make it a party.
Mr. President.
Okay. All right, very well. Anything else?
I would like to thank the Jefferson Council. I would like to thank the Jefferson Council and President Sharon Murphy.
Yes.
The Westmore Green Hats.
Yes.
For hosting this great little reception, you know.
They made a cake. Especially, that was fantastic.
You will send them a thank you card, please.
Write that in your notes, so I don't forget.
So nice.
All right.
They do that for the Jefferson Elementary School District every year.
That was, that was very cool.
We need to do a Kent application and a, and a gold, what's the?
Golden Bell.
A golden bell from the Green Hats.
Yes, absolutely, there's a lot of different things we need to nominate for Kent.
Yes, absolutely.
Cool, all right. Well, with that, it is eight fifty-seven, and we will adjourn to close session.
Who was the food manager?
Yeah, that was.
Oh, that was, that was just building this, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, I instructed that, go ahead, adjourn.
We're, we're adjourned to close session now.